Great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 5th, 2022 Placerville Planning Commission meeting. If everyone could, I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And if you could stand and join me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Rivas, would you please call roll? Mr. Rivas, you ready to call roll?
Yes, I'm trying to find my agenda. Sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I was like, did he hear me? I'm a little sleepy today, so.
Give him a moment.
I know, huh?
How is everyone this evening?
Good.
Okay, roll call. Let's see. We called, the meeting was called to order at 6:01. Okay, Commissioner Friend is out. Vice Chair Gopper.
Here.
Commissioner Keeney.
Here.
Chair Lepper.
Here.
And Commissioner List is out.
Okay. Thank you very much. So now we'll move on to the adoption of our agenda for the evening. I'll entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
I would request that we continue item 12.1 to the next planning commission as it requires five members to be present.
Okay, great.
So I'll second with that amendment if you will accept it. Certainly.
Okay, good. So we will continue the election of officers for the planning commission till our next meeting or the next meeting we have five members present. Okay, great. So next, we will approve the consent calendar, which was the minutes for the March 15th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
I have a minor typo.
Okay.
I found that you called the meeting to order at 5:59, not 6:59.
Yes, good catch.
And with that minor change, I'll move that we adopt the minutes from the meeting of March 15th, 2022.
All second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Post.
Did I call for all of us to approve the adoption of the agenda? Sorry. Adoption of agenda. All in favor of adopting the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That's all covered. There we go. So next, we have items of interest to the public. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on matters not on tonight's agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. Does any member of the public wish to adopt, address the commission on a non-agendized item? Okay. Seeing no one approach the podium, I will close public comment for the evening and move on to written communications. Do we have any written communications tonight?
Chair, we had one letter from PG&E, and that was, that was with respect to item, where is that?
10.3.
Yes, 7.3.
Great. And all commissioners have received a copy of the letter from PG&E. Okay. Do we have any next presentations and educational workshop sessions? Do we have any tonight, Mr. Rivas?
We have none tonight.
Good. So next, we will move on to our environmental assessments and public hearings. So tonight, we're going to start with 1,000 Fowler Way, a variance request 22-01. The report?
Thank you, members of the planning commission. This request is to consider a three-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required in the business professional zone. There's also the historic district overlay, but staff has looked at that overlay district does not affect this portion of the parcel, only affects the very west end of the park, where the parking lot is on the subject parcel, so it's not an issue. This is for the construction of a concrete pad for the insulation of a heating, ventilation, and air conditioning known as an HVAC unit. The site is located at 1,000 Fowler Way. It's a determinus of Fowler Way, approximately 500 feet from the northwest of this intersection with Marshall Way. The site is just slightly less than two acres in size. The site is fully developed with a multi-story business professional office building and associated parking and landscaping. Marshall Medical has taken ownership and has undertaken extensive renovation of the building. The HVAC unit is proposed to be located adjacent to the north side of the building. The ground elevation adjacent to the building is within a graded ravine next to a steep slope of 30% or greater, and is approximately about 10 feet below the parking lot pad that lies above where the unit will be placed. The unit will not be visible from any of the adjoining properties. Staff is recommending that the planning commission take the following actions: Adopt a staff report as part of the public record; find that this project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15305A; and make the findings contained in the staff report supporting the approval of a reduction in the side yard setback; and then approve variance 22-01 subject to the conditions of approval as recommended in the staff report. That concludes staff's report. Happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Beautiful. Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions on the report you received?
I just want to state that my, I had a concern about the noise of the HVAC unit. I don't think that the variance distance is going to really impact any noise attenuation, but I did exchange an email with staff and got the reply that this is a, you know, a modern unit with, that's actually operates very quietly, and there's other equipment present, like on the roof. So this equipment wouldn't contribute that much to the noise. I was particularly concerned about the one residential parcel that is somewhat close by. There's a parking lot and so on. So I'm sure you're familiar with the map, but I just wanted to state that for the record, and that my concern was addressed adequately by staff's response. And thank you, Mr. Rivas, for that.
You're welcome.
That's a really good point, and thank you for clarifying that with staff. Did you have any questions?
I did not.
Okay, great. Do we have an applicant today for this request? Hi. You can go ahead and come up to the podium. Thank you.
My name is Craig Gaines. I'm senior project manager.
From Marshall Medical Center. And did anybody have any additional questions?
Not really. It's just the time for the applicant to give any kind of information that they'd like to present with regards to the application.
Nothing additional. I mean, HVACs systems, I mean, we all use it, we all need it, and the building is, was in need of additional, additional heating and cooling. So since we're renovating the building, we thought we would add that.
Sounds like a good plan. I'm sure everyone inside will be happy about that.
Yes.
Okay, great. If you have nothing more, then you can just hang tight, and we'll let you know if we have any other questions for you. Okay, thank you. So, did you guys have any questions for him now?
No, I don't, I don't have any questions. I would say, you know, I do appreciate the package and all of the photographs, as well as, you know, marking and cross-sections, et cetera, that made it quite easy to understand the reason why you're requesting the variance in this case.
Agreed. Did you have any questions for the applicant?
My only question was addressed by staff. I don't know if you have anything further to add to that. Sounds like, you know, the problem is, is addressed, and in fact, won't contribute much to ambient noise. I did have one question. Is, there's an existing wood-sited structure next to the building that was in one of the photographs that you submitted in your application. I was just wondering if that was already existing, some sort of HVAC, or just curious what, what that was.
I believe it is an existing structure. Oh, it's the PG, it's where the PG&E panels are.
Oh, that's electrical. Okay. Thank you. I just was curious as to, you know, what you already had installed on that side.
I'm just making sure I don't, the contractor's back there, but I'm just making sure I don't misstep or misinform.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Commissioner Friend.
Sorry, my plane was delayed. Did the best I could. Apologies.
Well, thank you for, thanks for joining us. Okay, good. We've started the, I'm not exactly sure. Do I need to update you on anything? We've started the public hearing.
I assume you're on item 10.1?
We are, and this is the applicant, and we didn't really have too many questions for the staff beyond some noise clarification on the installation of it. Seems like we're good to go.
The one question I had is, how far along are you in the construction?
Of the pad and the unit? The pads been formed, but no further work happened on that, for the unit.
Right. So the unit's not in place, right? I didn't have a chance to go up and take a look at it. I saw from the pictures that work had already been done. So the pads laid. Placement of the unit's going to be based on whether or not you get the variance, I presume.
The pad?
Only the rebar.
Only the rebar.
Only the rebar. Okay. All right, thank you. One other question was difficult for me to tell from the photographs. It marked where there was a residence, right? There's a parking lot, I think it belongs to the school, and then there's a residence, but I could not tell what the distance, at least from what was in the packet. Again, I didn't have an option.
The distance from the unit to the residence?
Yeah. Because, again, noise, I don't know if folks have asked about noise. That was the one thing I was concerned about with the topography, if it was going to contain the noise, et cetera. So.
Well, so when the grade comes down, you have the building and the unit sitting down. The unit sits even below parking, so.
Okay. How far away is, is the residence, though?
Do you know how far that is?
Yards, feet?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if staff could answer those questions from Commissioner Friend. First of all, I just want to direct your attention. Staff placed an aerial photo up there for you to look at. You can see where that red dot is. That red dot, just below that dot is where the HVAC is going to be located, and there's a residence there. The parking lot is right there above it. And if you look at the photograph that was contained within the application in the staff report, it shows it located basically in a ravine, and that ravine is created by the north side of the building and then the cut slope. And so staff, meaning at the staff level, we have the administrative ability to reduce the setback by 50%. And so the setback is 10 feet in the business professional zone. Therefore, we could have allowed 5 feet. So really, they're just placing it 3 feet instead of 5 feet. So the 2 feet is going to make really no difference. In fact, I would say that if you were able to cut out a notch in that cut slope and put the HVAC, you can't, of course, because it's on adjoining property, but if you could, you would even reduce the noise even more. So I think moving it or having it closer to the cut slope is going to cut the noise to a greater extent than if it met the setback and they actually moved it closer to the building. So if you look at that aerial, you can, you can see where the existing buildings are, and you can see where the house is. Staff estimates that to be anywhere from 100 to 100 feet from the edge of the corner of the house.
And thank you, Pierre. And that aerial photo was in our, our packet.
Yes.
And now that I'm looking at it, I got confused by this here, just the labeling. The building is actually blocking the direct line of sight to the residence, if I'm reading, looking at this correctly.
Yes, because the residence is actually much lower in elevation than where this is, and so it's, it's to the, it's to the northwest around the corner. So it's, it's down slope from, from the, from where this whole area is, if that helps. But typically, too, I'll just add that these are very quiet units. I mean, it's basically a large fan condensing unit. You see them on, on houses. We don't, we don't suspect that there's going to be any noise issue from this unit. There are units already existing on top of the building.
Good. Okay. If there's no further questions from the applicant, now you can return to your seat, please. Thank you. And we'll let you know if there's anything further. I'm going to go ahead and open this hearing up for public comment. So now is the opportunity for any members of the public to comment on this application. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment? Okay. Seeing no one coming to the podium, I will close public comment and go ahead and return the matter to commissioners for discussion and action.
So I guess I would just state that, you know, I support this variance. I think the topography of this specific site warrants it here.
Agree. I found it to be unobtrusive, and I think it does serve a really nice purpose for the facility.
And I think our concern that we had about the sound, you know, if staff was allowed to approve a 5-foot, and where the change is only 2 from what might otherwise be allowed, even if it wasn't a noise unit, that wouldn't really do much for, for that. But I'm, I'm satisfied that that noise won't be an issue.
Great.
And I'm ready to make a motion.
I would be happy, yes.
If you would entertain that, Madam Chair.
Unless any other, yeah, go ahead.
Move that we adopt the staff report and the recommendations contained therein, making the staff report part of the public record, including that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA. And the other two findings, B and C, is listed on page 3, discussing the built nature of the site and the topography, and also that we approve this variance 2201 subject to the five conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
Fantastic.
All second.
Okay. Any further discussion, or I'll go ahead and call for roll? Okay. Go ahead and call roll.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gopper?
Aye.
Commissioner Keeney?
Aye.
Chair Lepper?
Aye.
Okay. So the application passes 4 to 0, and a reminder that there is a 10-day appeal period for all planning commission decisions. Okay, great. So we're approved. Good to go. And the next one, the next public hearing we're going to do is for 1,100 Marshall Way, a special temporary use permit, 22-01, zoning interpretation 22-01.
Thank you very much. There's actually two components to this request. This, we are asking the commission to approve a special temporary use permit, which typically are approved administratively at the staff level. But the first, actually, the first component of this is a zoning interpretation, and this is a request to add temporary medical diagnostic equipment, mobile trailers, as a use to the list of uses permitted under City Code Section 10-4-7A, special temporary use permits, to include in all state temporary medical diagnostic equipment, mobile trailers, and allowing the same at Marshall Medical Center located at 1,100 Marshall Way. Their request is a little more specific. They're looking for a TC scanner mobile trailer. Staff is recommending a language a little bit more broad, so that it's not specific just for Marshall, but you would be, staff is recommending that you approve the resolution that is contained as an attachment one to your staff report. Basically, would add that additional temporary special use permit provision. So in the future, if there's the need for a hospital or clinic within Placerville to install, you know, a scanner, a CAT scan, or some other kind of diagnostic equipment in a, in a mobile trailer, staff would then be able to approve that. So with that, staff is recommending that the commission find that this request meets the legislative purpose and intent of City Code 10-4-7A and adopting resolution 202201, which is actually attachment 2 of your staff report, and then direct staff to issue the special temporary use permit for the Marshall Medical CT scanner mobile trailer. That concludes staff's report. Happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. So do any commissioners have questions about staff on the application?
Sorry. I just had two questions. One was related to, do we currently have any other medical clinics not associated with Marshall in the city limits?
I believe there is a clinic on Cedar Ravine, and I'm thinking there are some other clinics that may exist on Fowler, but we wrote, we wrote it, we wrote the provision in the generality, so that should something like that happens, we don't have to come back and devise additional language to cover something else. So we tried to be a little bit more broad brush.
Okay. And then, my other question was just related to the process to make sure that this doesn't become a permanent use or a serial usage. I know that was certainly mentioned, but a temporary use should be a temporary use. I know those are usually issued for a year, but what would be the process if a facility kept coming back asking for temporary use permits for fundamentally the same use every year?
If they asked to extend it, then typically we come then to the commission to approve it.
Okay.
Staff will not administratively approve it beyond a year.
Great. Thank you. Those were my questions.
You're welcome.
Pierre, as I recall, there have been other temporary trailers at Marshall Hospital, and just for my own information, was that a, in the past? I don't know if you remember if that was a special temporary use permit at that time. And is this, I just kind of wondered, how can I put this? Be clear on how the city has handled this previously. Marshall would come with a, did it always come to the planning commission, or was it something that at, could be approved at the staff level in the past?
I'd have to look at the history of those. I, I do know that there, I believe those are commercial coaches, and before the city planner retired, we were going over some of the outstanding projects that may, that I need to be aware of. It's my understanding that the temporary use permit for that, but you know, I think that's a little bit different because those are commercial coaches. They're under a conditional use permit as temporary commercial coach, I believe. So it's not a special temporary use permit that approved those. But, but that permit does expire, and if, if Marshall Medical wishes to extend those, staff would bring that before the commission. And those have been before the commission in the past.
Okay. Thank you. That's, that's really what I was wanting to know. Comes to the commission for approval. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pierre, just kind of continuing on this vein, A5 in the staff report, presently such other uses as the planning commission may by resolution. I'm reading on page 2, item 5 under.
Thank you.
Item A. As the planning commission may by resolution deemed to be within the intent and purpose of this section, which is what we're dealing with right now. And my only question concerns a strong word, so I won't use it directly. I would rather see section 2, the wording changed a little bit, to be even a little bit broader. Having just come out of COVID, and in many areas in the state set up what we call alternative care centers, which are out of hospital facilities, I ran one, I ran the first one down in San Mateo, actually, for a number of months. I'm wondering if perhaps section 2 could be worded instead, temporary trailers for the provision of medical services and/or equipment is deemed necessary, which would give it even broader leverage. Just right now, it's, even though it's broad, it's kind of limited to medical equipment. So I don't know if you'd be willing to entertain a little bit of wordsmithing with that. So that was just kind of my, my reaction to it.
I guess staff hasn't done any analysis as far as expanding these types of uses. We kept it limited to a mobile trailer, which wasn't in any of these sections where staff could approve it at the staff level. Marshall Medical needs this because they're going to be installing a CT static scanner within the hospital. So this is just, allows them to continue to test their patients.
No, I get, yeah, that I completely understand. I understand the reason for it. I'm simply suggesting, and perhaps we can do it as part of our deliberations, if my fellow council member, planning commissioners are willing to entertain that, is just reword this a little bit more to make it even a little bit broader to cover not only what Marshall needs right now, but other eventualities that could arise, which we have had to deal with just recently. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, that's a Mars, much larger use that we didn't advertise for. We didn't analyze. I would think that, you know, depending upon its size and scope, that may or may not something that we could approve. Normally, we, when something is in, codified in here in the code, it's something staff can readily approve. Typically, the process is an applicant will give us, you know, it's basically just a couple of pages and a site plan. We route that to the city PD, El Dorado County Fire, other agencies or, or other entities that may want to comment on it before we even issue the permit. But something like that, depending upon where it's located, the size, the amount of people it's going to accommodate, it's probably outside of the staff's opinion this time. It's outside of the scope of this particular application that's before you, and the resolution is before you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the staff? Okay. So now we will go ahead and move to the applicant presentation again. So if you have any additional comments to offer on the project or insight?
No, we're just using the temporary unit to install new equipment in the hospital. It's a bridge, right, to get us from, through construction to completion, and then it'll be removed after we get final from Marshall.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I did. I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Gottberg's question regarding serial application. So right now, today, what is your projected completion date for the internal CT project, which would negate then the need for this?
For the, for the use permit?
Yeah.
I'm anticipating once, once construction starts, eight months max.
Okay, eight months when it starts, and then when do we anticipate it starting?
Beginning of next month.
Okay. So right now, from where you're at, you have a reasonable expectation, you'll be able to complete the work within the one year that this application is granting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? No? Okay. Seeing none, I'll let you go ahead and have a seat and let you know if we need you. Okay, great. So now is the part where we can open the hearing up to public comment. So if there's any members of the public who would like to offer a comment on this hearing, go ahead and approach the podium. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the, oh, I'm so sorry. I'm not used to looking to the left there.
You're right there.
Yeah.
Luke Shepherd, County Fire, working at Prevention Bureau. Can I just talk about?
It's for the YouTube audience we have going.
All right. So my name's Luke Shepherd, work with El Dorado County Fire, Prevention Bureau. And I just wanted to pepper in a couple of quick thoughts that I had here in favor of this temporary use permit. Some benefits that I'm seeing right off the bat, you have an increased level of patient care in the county, and we don't have to farm that out. When that happens, we have a, an increase in our inner facility transfers, which is a larger impact than I think people realize on the capability of the EMS system to provide emergency medical services to folks that need it. And then the third point, the, the internal machine is fantastic, and that's great that we're, we're upping our game in a, in a sense, in the, the ability to provide that. And those things break. They go down, they have maintenance issues, and when that happens, we're right back there before or without one. And so the ability for staff to quickly and efficiently get things like this in play helps multitudes of people, from the providers at Marshall to the EMS crews, et cetera. So to facilitate something that, that expedites a need and provides increased patient care and doesn't debilitate or impact our system, to me, is very practical and would, would be a very nice thing to see on a, on a routine and regular basis, especially with the potential for failure or maintenance or things of that nature with the permanent machine. End of comment.
Well, thank you. Very helpful and very good insight. Okay. So if, are there any other members of the public who would wish to comment?
It's all.
No? Okay. So seeing that, I'm going to close public comment and return the matter to commissioners for discussion and action. Does anyone have any further questions or comments on this application?
So, Madam Chair, I still think that we could broaden this to include medical services that might be outside what Marshall is asking for. It would include it, but it would, it was to allow it in case something comes up. The language that I would offer would be, section 2 would be.
Can I ask a clarifying question before?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. So this is the city code that just has a general outline, but you want to specifically add medical into this description?
So, so this, what's being offered by staff, step on page 8, section 2, this is the language.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Yes.
Well, this is the language we're being asked to add to the ordinance, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So my, my point is simply that I think we can meet the needs for Marshall and also meet needs which, while we don't have right now today, Marshall doesn't have, or another clinic doesn't have right now this moment, we have seen those within the last two years. And, and so we could easily address them, and staff could then administratively approve. And that way, we wouldn't have to come here when we have a need to set these things up to take care of people that need help right now. That, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Yes. Okay.
So my, my language would be, okay, my language would read, section 2, temporary mobile trailers to provide medical services, including diagnostic equipment deemed to be required for the proper functioning of the community or, or as a temporary accessory to an approved use in our construction project. Okay. So I've got, I added medical services essentially into just the equipment, right? required for the proper functioning of the community or, or as a temporary accessory to an approved use in our construction project. Okay? So I've got, I added medical services essentially into just the equipment, right? So it just, it simply expands it a little bit. It's still the exact same function, okay? In this case, we have, we need to be able to place equipment that's providing a medical service. I'm saying I'd want to limit it to, to just equipment. I mean, if we need to put physicians and nurses in there for whatever reason to see patients, to triage, let's say triage or whatever, we'd be, they'd be able to do this. And COVID presented a more than just a couple of hours or even a couple of days situation. It created a couple of months to a couple of years situation where you might need this. So that's, that's my suggestion.
Thank you for clarifying that. I follow your thought process now. Do any other commissioners have thoughts on that? The change?
So I guess I have, I mean, I would like to see it kind of kept as is related to diagnostic equipment. And my main concern with sort of that change is I think it's sort of outside the scope of the item as it was agendized for the public. And so we haven't had the ability for the public to comment on that other use. So I would sort of like to keep it to medical and diagnostic equipment, mobile trailers.
Madam Chair, staff could comment on that?
If I may, that simply means if, to provide that service, which might need to happen on a stat basis, when people really need it, it's going to have to go through this process again, which I think is unwarranted. I don't know how you could possibly argue that.
Madam Chair, if staff could comment. When Commissioner Friend first presented his change, staff had a different interpretation than what the commissioner was saying. Staff felt that it was authorizing something beyond a mobile trailer. So what he described, it doesn't require any change of the language. The staff would approve any diagnostic or any additional hospital medical going on within the trailer, if it's based on some other reason that they need to install a temporary trailer. So based on what Commissioner Friend said, no changes necessary, staff would approve such a request.
The umbrellas are either.
Because it would be within the, right.
Mm-hmm.
So thank you, Pierre, that's really helpful. So this does not restrict the use simply to equipment. Services could be provided.
We had, staff added equipment in there, just in case they wanted to have equipment in there.
Gotcha, okay, that's really helpful. Because I do think it's really important.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, it took me a minute to follow what you're saying, but I, I think I agree, yeah, that the temporary medical and diagnostic medical, equipment, mobile trailers, I think is pretty encompassing, and the resolution is clear in directing staff to be able to move those forward. So.
Just as a matter of how it would operate, I think your concern was to allow for proper staff to be there, not just a physical piece of equipment in a trailer, but the way it operates, there, there are technicians that are operating the equipment and assisting patients in and out.
Yeah, my concern when I read this was the only thing that, that we were being very narrow in saying, well, we'll allow a trailer for the purpose of medical equipment, right? In this case, to CT scan, but if we're just, let's say we're just doing triage, right, which is just people, nurses, paramedics, physicians, in there evaluating patients, okay? And, and we need this, we need this space to do it, okay? I was afraid that this wouldn't cover it. Staff is comfortable that it covers it, so I'm more than comfortable.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, now that we're on the same page, would anyone like to make a motion around this report?
I would move adoption, approval of the special use, temporary use permit 2201 as presented in the staff report dated today, incorporating the staff report as public records with the recommendations as found on page five and six. I guess page five.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Page seven and eight.
Now, I'm confused, I thought we were.
So we may need to adopt the resolution as well, so we may have two separate actions.
Right, adopt the resolution, right. And then directs, once the resolution is adopted, then staff has the authority to actually issue the special temporary use permit.
I think we still have to approve it. Well, whether or not.
That's not the way I'm reading on page five, point three, direct staff to issue the special TUP.
Perhaps you could just rephrase your motion, just follow the three.
I'll modify my motion to approve the resolution as submitted, which I interpret also be approving the temporary use permit 22 dash zero one, because it does have a number to write. So we, I, to me, I think we still have to approve it. We also have to approve the resolution. Can't approve the permit without the resolution. So my, I would amend my motion to approve the resolution as presented in the staff report this evening.
And direct staff to issue.
The resolution.
The special temporary use permit.
Yes.
Madam Chair, if staff could provide a little clarification?
Point of order, do we need us?
Well, there's, there is three, three actions. The first action is enter staff's report in the public record. Number two is the important one that staff needs to move forward. Basically, adopting the resolution is modifying the code to add staff's ability to approve it. You're merely, you're not approving it, but you're directing staff to issue the special temporary use permit. We have the application. We still need to circulate that to fire, I believe it's subject to OSHPOD, you know, permitting, and to the PD, so everybody's aware. That's usually, you know, like a week, week and a half turnaround, and then we issue the permit. So it hasn't been issued yet. You're just going to be directing us to do that because staff will have the authority to do it once you approve the resolution.
So I'm, I'm going to rephrase my motion to adopt the staff report as presented, approve the resolution as presented in the staff report, and to direct staff to issue the temporary use permit. Twenty-two dash zero one.
I'll amend my second to agree with that.
Thank you very much.
And I have a friendly amendment to explicitly state that we make the finding that the request meets the legislative purpose and intent of the city code section 10 dash four dash seven A. I think that's just good procedure to make our finding and then follow the recommended actions that you've already included in your motion.
That's an excellent catch, and I accept that friendly amendment.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if staff could just, again, provide a friendly clarification here. When, when the commission approves and you adopt the resolution, the resolution contains all the appropriate findings necessary to do the measure. You don't need, you don't need to adopt findings separately from the resolution. Resolution, if you read through it, it's all the findings of fact for you. It outlines the entire process.
Okay, from the top. I don't think we need to change than what I moved in your second. I think we're good.
Yeah, I think we're good. I think we have done exactly what staff asked to request, say that it meets all of the purpose and intent. The record, or the report is in the record. The resolution 22, 2022 dash oh one will be adopted, and staff will issue a special temporary use permit. We have a first and a second on that. Can you go ahead and call roll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Gottberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Keeney?
Aye.
Chair Lepper?
Aye. Two for two tonight, so you're good to go. Good luck with everything, and thanks for your informative applications. We really appreciate it, and we also appreciate the work that you do for our community. So thank you. Okay, great. So next, we will move on to our third public hearing of the evening, which will be for 1332 Broadway, a site plan review 21 dash oh four.
I can just wait a few minutes till the room clears?
You're going to like what we're going to talk about. No.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a site plan review request for exterior modifications to an existing two-story, 45-room motel. It's known as Gold Country Inn, formerly was called the Broadway Motel, comprising two buildings on two separate parcels and a landscaping plan. The site is located at 1332 Broadway, on the south side of Broadway, approximately 550 feet east of Blair's Lane. And the site is located within the Highway Commercial Zone District. The 1.2 acre site is completely developed with the existing hotel that comprises the two separate two-story motel buildings, parking areas, and existing landscaping on the two separate adjoining parcels. Hangtown Creek runs along the south side of the property that is between the motel site and the Caltrans maintenance facility. The exterior design of the, of the proposed motel may be described as a, what I would call mountain modern. I'm not an architect, but it seems to fit, style of architecture. And this is in sharp contrast to the existing motel elevations, which staff also placed behind you, so you can clearly see what the existing hotel looks like and what the proposed hotel with the improvements and the exterior modifications will, will morph into. Something I think we can all really enjoy looking at compared to what it is now. The proposed building elevations incorporate new design components such as corrugated metal, horizontal vintage wood, redwood fiber cement siding, use of earth toned colors, all that enhance the local design compatibility elements and which complements the overall building massing. The existing vertical wood siding is to be repainted. Building elements also include used-to-metal guardrails, and the building facade variations of materials and orientation will add further interest to the buildings. Added features to the site that currently don't exist include a shaded patio area in the rear of the motel facility, and a propane fire pit that would be next to the front entrance facing Broadway, next to the motel lobby, and horizontal wood, redwood fencing throughout the facility, and new metal railing throughout. With respect to the landscaping, you have before you preliminary landscaping plan that accompanies the application. Staff has reviewed the plan, and staff concludes that the plan is substantially in conformity with the city's landscaping criteria in terms of plant palette and tree selection. And it's given in my, in mind that we have a, an already existing developed site. More specifically, staff finds that the street tree variety and spacing does appear to meet minimum standards, and the type of and spacing of parking lot trees is substantially met, given the site is already developed and the landscaping plan is meant to renovate and enhance the existing landscaping that has deteriorated due to lack of maintenance. All the shrubs and ground covers would be drought tolerant. The irrigation plan was also provided, and that will be required to meet the city's water efficient landscape regulations and comply with mulch use requirements under the new city code seven dash one B dash 11, which is part of the city's model water efficiency, efficient landscaping ordinance requirements, or MLO. Staff is recommending that the planning commission take the following actions. Adopt the staff report as part of the public record. Find that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA, pursuant to 15301, this is an existing facility, and specifically exempting interior and exterior alterations to the building, and section 15304, which are minor alterations to land, specifically subsection B, which exempts new gardening and landscaping. Make the findings that the project is consistent with the city's general plan, and make the necessary findings contained within the staff report for approval of site plan review 21 dash oh four for the remodeled Gold Country Inn, and then approve site plan review 21 oh four, subject to the conditions of approval as recommended in the staff report. That concludes staff's report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. I think the architect and other representatives of the hotel are here to answer any questions you may have. And staff has placed all of the different elevations up there behind you. Hopefully, that'll help if you have questions, and the architect can answer any more specific or detailed questions you may have regarding those elevations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Save us from bumping elbows, opening all these big documents up, up here. Perfect. Okay, so do any commissioners have questions for staff about the report you received?
I would just like to note that we received the letter from PG&E dated March 31st, updated. I'm not really sure why they initially submitted such an extensive review. Seems like they, perhaps this got sent to the wrong department first, but their shorter summary letter, I think is, they better understand what this project is. And again, you know, they, they still have the caveat that they may do future review, but hopefully, no further review is needed. But I just wanted to make a note that this letter was received and is now part of the package.
Yeah, staff could just comment on that first letter that we received from PG&E. It would be our interpretation that that first letter was more of what we would just call a, more of a canned letter. It's, it's a letter that they sent out initially that covers most of the bases that PG&E would be concerned about as far as underground pipelines or overhead facilities and those kinds of things. There were a couple of conditions that, that staff noted in that boilerplate first comment letter we received from them that really pertain to landscaping that, that may pertain to the site. I didn't actually go out and look and see if there were any overhead power lines, but we just want to make sure then that the landscaper, when they do the work, is cognizant, just in case they're planting a tall tree that would be under power lines. But then I think the project probably moved on to another section within PG&E. I mean, they're quite busy these days, so I think they took a harder look and maybe realized that this was not a brand new hotel that was being built, but just a, just a, what would you call, just an exterior renovation of an existing hotel. And so I think it's, the second comments are more germane to the application before you.
And the, the second letter, that didn't require any additional work on staff's part to call PG&E and contact them and say, you know, they, on their own volition, took a second look and issued the March 31st letter?
Yeah, staff received that, that letter via email, so staff responded to that email.
Okay, great.
Thanking them for reviewing and commenting on the project.
Clarification, always good. Okay, any other questions from commissioners to staff? No? Okay. So I will go ahead and welcome the applicant to come to the podium if you have anything you'd like to present or add or discuss with us.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Josh Dibliss, I'm the architect, and Prash is the owner of the property, new owner of the property. We don't really have anything to add. Look forward to your comments, and if you have any questions, let us know.
Cool, thank you very much. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
I just want to thank you on your efforts. It's, it looks like a wonderful design, and I wish you, you know, the following approval, but it is a much needed update to that site. And I also appreciate the very thorough packet that you submitted. I think it made it easy for us to get a good sense that, you know, you, you've addressed all the concerns of the site. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you for your feedback.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, cool. So if you guys have no questions, then I'll go ahead and have you sit down and let you know if we have any more questions for you. At this point, I will go ahead and open this application up to public comment. So if there's any members of the public who'd wish to address the commission on this topic, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comment on this application and return the matter to commissioners for discussion and action. I will echo your thoughts that I thought that the packet was really thorough, very informative, really nice design, and a really nice update, and really fits the, the look and the feel of the community, and I just thought it was very good, so.
I, maybe someone, staff or fellow commissioner can help me out. The red bud that's listed, is it in our planting palette?
Yes, I believe western red bud is within our planting palette. It's actually native to El Dorado County.
Okay, oh, okay, that was.
It's a native tree. It's the eastern red bud, it's a little bit a larger tree that's, that's non-native, but western red bud.
All right, thank you, Pierre. So I'll echo, I'll echo Commissioner Keeney's observation about the project, and, and actually, you know, this is the second or third item now in the Broadway, upper Broadway area, starting with the hotel up by, I'll call it Jakeway. Jakeway, and then the, the sale of the shopping center, and now this, and some other things. So I, you know, I want to be guardedly optimistic that maybe, you know, Broadway and upper Broadway can begin to be revitalized, which I think is, is really much needed. So I'm really happy to, to see this project. I think the presentation is good in terms of the materials, and the brevity of the applicant is also appreciated. So I will be disposed to a positive vote.
Yeah, I would also say that, you know, this looks like a very nice update to me, and it was a very thorough package, and I don't have any questions or concerns on approving this, so. Would you entertain a motion?
I would. I would love to.
Glad you're doing it, because I butchered the last.
Just try to follow along staffs as much as possible.
Yes, with that, I would make a motion to adopt the staff report as part of the public record. Find that this project is categorically exempt from CEQA, per item two in the staff report. Make the findings per item. report, make the findings per item three in the staff report that it follows the general plan consistency, make the findings for the site plan review 21 oh four listed in the staff report, and approve SPR 21 oh four, subject to the conditions of approval provided in the staff report.
Fantastic.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, great. Go ahead, you can go ahead and call roll.
Commissioner Friend.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gopper.
Aye.
Commissioner Keeney.
Aye.
Chair Lepper.
Aye.
So the application has been approved four to zero. A reminder that all planning commission decisions are appealable within a 10-day calendar period. Good luck with your project, and we really look forward to seeing the outcome of it. Very beautiful job.
Any idea when you plan to start construction?
We've still got to go get some building permits and stuff after that. It's been delayed for quite a bit, so the contractors, busy with other, the one that applied for the initial permit, demo permit. So until that, I got to see a schedule, but furniture is pending delivery.
Everything's pending delivery.
More than eight months in, you know, we haven't had it on the site yet, but we have containers on site with, you know, the tile and all that stuff are just sitting there, but we're ready to go as soon as I get that scheduled.
That's great. So the answer to the question is imminent.
We get these things sorted out, we're ready to go.
Let us know if we can assist.
We're super excited.
Yeah, we are too.
Yeah.
I would just like to thank you again. It's been in Placerville quite some time now, and when friends and family want to visit and they can't stay at my house, we've really, people come up short. There are very few options in the past. We're starting to pick up now. We've had another application that was approved, looking good, but really, thank you for updating an existing site instead of, you know, always having to break ground for something like this. Thanks a lot, and good luck.
It's super exciting. And I just told him, I have a manager on site, the project manager, that's ready to go, and he said, this doorbell rings almost every night, people wanting rooms. I said, man, we missed the, you know, we missed all season. So we're super excited to get it going. Hopefully, we can get it before the summer, you know, or even, you know, in the summer latest, we get it open, ready to go.
Apple Hill season.
I'd say lucky for us, it's beautiful year-round, yeah.
We're going to have a grand opening, so we're going to invite everybody.
Great. Glad to be there.
Well, best of luck. We're really excited, and hopefully, everything goes smoothly for you. Okay, thank you very much. I hope you enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Okay, great. So that concludes our public hearings for the evening. So I'll move on to continued items, which I see we have none tonight.
We have none.
Okay, no continued items. So we have actually continued item 12.1 to the next meeting of all five planning commissioners as soon as that comes up. And we will move on to number 13, which is matters from commissioners and staff. I do actually have something for this topic tonight. So after the last meeting, the last meeting, I should say, a member of the public approached the commission about the role of the planning commission in, you know, what our duties are and where our boundaries sort of may fall. And I actually met with Mayor Taylor about last week, it was, to talk about the planning commission and the intertwine with city council and how that looks, and what our challenges and our successes, and what goes kind of just on, I mean, they're aware, but just what the kind of current situation is. And so I went on and looked, and so we discussed, one thing is just that, looking at what a planning commissioner's role is, again, and making sure that we all remember, and the public remembers, what different things we're faced with and what our sort of guidance is on what, when to be black and white, when to be gray, and when to fall in between. So I only printed one, but I'm going to give it to Pierre. It's from the Institute for Local Government. I was just looking through some different resources and found this one to be informative but not overly verbose, and kind of just reminding us about things. And as I said, the public too, so we'll make it available, but what kind of questions that we ask ourselves when we're looking at applications, and what are the different ways that we can look at applications, compromises, gives, takes, being really, holding to our values as a city? So I'll pass this out, and then in the future, I believe there's a plan to do some sort of joint session with city council, where we all just kind of come together. I know it hasn't happened that I can recall in the time that I've been on the commission, so just an idea to bring us all together in the same room, have a little workshop around some of the historic stuff, and just the intermixing of the two, and go from there.
So, that's great.
Which was something I believe that you requested.
I had actually, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to make a formal request, Pierre, to counsel on that or what the process is, but I am hoping that we can have a meeting with council, really specific to the historic district guidelines, and particularly with regards to the Secretary of the Interior standards and the application thereof, right? So, and with the windows being probably the most onerous of all of them, so I don't know if you've had an opportunity to advance that at all.
No, staff, staff will be reporting on a number of items. I'll be happy to do so once the commission is finished there, any reports that they have.
Definitely. That sums up mine. So that was just, I just brought that to share with everyone, and then to make available for the public as a resource, and to look forward to our future discussions around it. Anyone else have anything? No? Okay.
I applaud you taking the initiative with that. We've, part of our, one of our handbooks that we get as commissioners has probably an older edition of that roles of the planning commissioner, and thanks for going out and, you know, it, I don't think anything has, you know, really changed, but I'm sure that there's some updated language that's just good to give it another read and, you know, remind ourselves, you know, where, what our role really is and where we fit in with the overall, so, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Like I said, I just started poking around, and it just came across to me as a very, it kind of just helped me put my own thoughts together, like, okay, I feel like that's what we do, and I do feel like that's what we do in a lot of the situations, but just a nice way it's written, so, I hope that's all. Okay?
Great, thank you. Staff has just a couple of items. First, your commission considered a site plan review, and it was an historic site plan review for a house on Lincoln and Coleman Street. I believe that was on March 1st. That was appealed, and it will be heard by the city council on the 12th of April. And then on the March 15th, you considered another site plan review request for exterior modifications to an historic structure in historic district at Chamberlain in Sacramento. That particular case was also appealed, and staff is attempting to place that on the April 12th city council meeting, so council will hear both those at the same time. Staff has spoken with the mayor, and we are looking at holding a joint city council, planning commission workshop with respect to the historic districts and how those site plan reviews and the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines are supposed to be applied. We are tentatively looking at the 19th. Not sure we'll be able to make that date. Staff did reach out to SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Officer, to see if maybe they could participate, provide us a staff that could give a presentation on the preservation of historic structures and what historic districts mean and what the Secretary of Interior Standards mean. Unfortunately, they don't have the availability to do that at the moment. Julianne, who is the SHPO person over there, I spoke with her actually today, and she explained to me that they have contracted with an outside consultant that is actually putting together modules and videos, and those should be available, hopefully, coming soon next year, early in the year, but they're working on that now. She also informed me that do go to the website, there's a lot of information on there to assist people interested in historic preservation, and in particular, to assist the individual homeowner that finds themselves in an historic district in whichever city in California. So, so that's sort of where we're at. So unfortunately, I think we're probably not going to have an expert there, but hopefully we can show, show maybe a video that would, you know, help explain something to be part of that workshop, but at least it'll be the opportunity for the city council and the commission to air out some of the issues that seem to come up with these particular reviews.
If I may, Madam Chair, Pierre, so you're talking about April 19th for that?
That was a tentative date that we were looking at.
So that would be our commission meeting, and we will need to do our election of officers. Will we do that then, and then have the joint meeting, or what would be the mechanics of that?
I guess the mechanics of that would be, we would propose starting the workshop, say, at four o'clock. Workshop shouldn't last more than two hours, and then at six o'clock, then the regular planning commission meeting could convene. That's the plan.
So I have another question, and this is regarding the second appeal that you just mentioned, and you may or may not be able to answer this because it's now been appealed. But I, in going to the minutes, very specifically, the motion was very, very specific that this had to be subject to approval by staff, and it had to be in conformance with the Secretary of Interior Standards. So I'm curious as to what the basis of an appeal would be. The applicant was not given the right to do what they want. They had to come back to staff, and they still have to meet the standards. So maybe that got missed, but, and if it got missed, I'm bringing it to your attention so that you can take it to council's attention, but the wording of the motion, and I think I contributed to some of that wording, was very, very precise to make sure that we aren't putting or ignoring those standards. They're absolutely in play. And so I'm just curious, I was thinking about this on the plane back this afternoon, so I wonder if I got appealed, and what the basis would be for that.
Staff hasn't analyzed the appellant's points of contention in his documents, but with respect to that addition to the conditions of approval, from staff's perspective, staff provided a recommendation, it comes before you, and that kind of, I guess from staff's perspective, it's like saying then staff shouldn't come before the commission. Staff would just make, make the findings or make that decision. As I pointed out in my staff report the last time, I believe, and it could have been, maybe that was a comment I made March 1st, I may have made it on the March 15th hearing on either one of those site plan reviews for historic review, is that staff has much limited discretion than the council does. I'll leave it at that.
So then finally, regardless of whether or not we have the joint session, we will have a meeting on the 19th if for no other reason than to approve, elect the officers, I presume. And if we can't do, if we can't do the joint, then we'll be here at six o'clock as opposed to four.
Yes, staff is tentatively hoping to have that joint meeting on the 19th at four o'clock, so that hopefully, two hours would be ample time to hold a joint meeting, and then we would have our regular planning commission meeting then commence, you know, on or about six o'clock. So we will have a meeting, in the very minimum, to elect the officers, but we'll try and get an item on, for that agenda as well.
Okay. Good. Any other matters from commissioners or from staff?
I will be gone April 27 to approximately May 29 or so. So if there are any meetings in May, I will not be here.
April 27 through May?
Twenty-eight or twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight or nine, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Friend. Okay.
Good to know. Okay, if there's nothing further, then I will go ahead and adjourn the April 5th meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission at 7:06 PM. Thank you very much.